I call this meeting to order of the San Marcos City Council. This is a work session meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 2nd of 2024. It is 3:00 P.M. Ms. Trevino, please call the roll.
Mr. Prather. Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Garza. Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Okay.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Mendosa?
Here.
Ms. Mendosa, thank you. We have a foreign president.
Okay. First off, is our citizen comment time period? The city council hears citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. Those wishing to speak during the citizen comment or any of those time periods, there is a sign up requirement and deadline or online at the city clerk's office. If you ask to speak online, we will send a call in number and a link for you. Speakers may speak once during citizen comment time period, may not yield time to others. And you have three minutes to speak when you state your name. A timer is displayed on the screen. When the timer shows only yellow, you have less than 20 seconds left. When the timer is red, your time to speak is up and a bell will ring. And the mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and atmosphere of free defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. And we have, we have speakers who are signed up. Do we get them over or are they, is he doing it by phone?
By phone.
Okay. So we have Jen Williams, who is speaking to us online on the phone. Mr. Williams?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Who's speaking?
My name is Genesis Williams.
Okay.
Twenty-two-year-old Malachi Williams shot and murdered by San Marcos Police Department April 11th, marking July 11th, three months since his death, and a, in a long three months of still not knowing what happened to my brother. We are yet to receive any information or body cam footage. City of San Marcos, you are failing us. Our demands remain the same. Release of the officer's name and badge number, remove the officer under investigation from duty, and allow my family to view all available footage with all the siblings, with all siblings and attorneys present. You may have been able to kill him, but you will not kill his story. Justice for Malachi.
Okay, it sounds like she's finished. And do we have anyone else online? Okay. Then we will continue on with our meeting. Item one.
Receive a staff update on the new city hall and provide direction to staff.
Ms. Reyes.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm pleased to introduce Catherine Caffrey, our new city hall project director. Kat joined us in April and most recently served as assistant city manager for the city of Cedar Park. She's planning to provide more information about herself, so I'd like to take this time to commend both Kat for getting up to speed on picking up the Hopkins Gateway redevelopment project and assistant city manager Lori Moyer for all the groundwork she has provided to date. Kat has quickly dived into, understand all the components of the project and the expansive scope and vision that encompasses a new city hall as well as enhancing the entire Hopkins corridor that serves as a gateway to the San Marcos River and downtown. The purpose of today's presentation is to give you an overview of the work being done on the project as we gain more momentum and become, and begin the initial phases. Kat will also be giving a very high level overview on when our public engagement efforts will begin, as well as introducing the creation of a project steering committee. She has quite a bit of content to cover, and I'm sure you're going to have many questions. I, I just want to also, before I turn it over to her, is just say she knows, she has done some major work in Cedar Park, and that was the big reason why, you know, wanting to make sure that with her experience, since we want to be hyper-focused on getting this city hall and this redevelopment area done, she's the right person to come on and really help us make sure that we can do that and augment our staff in order to be able to do so. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Catherine Caffrey.
All right. Good afternoon, mayor and council. I am happy to be here with you all to give you this update on a project that I think is near and dear to your hearts and definitely every city staff person I have met in the last three months definitely wants to tell me what they'd like in the new city hall. So I know it's important to them as well. And I also want to echo Ms. Reyes's comments with a big thank you to Ms. Moyer, who really did so much foundational work on this project that it's just a dream to work on something like this. And then it's especially terrific when you're sort of coming in from somebody who really did such a wonderful job doing a lot of groundwork. This is what I'm going to be covering this afternoon. I'm going to give you just a brief introduction on my background, only in the sense of how it's relevant to the project here in San Marcos. Then do a brief overview of sort of where the project stands, really for the benefit of anyone maybe watching this presentation. And then really focusing more on the overall project plan and scope. And then the meat of the presentation is really what we're working on now and what is to come. I will be kind of introducing a recommendation for the committee, the council to form a Hopkins Gateway Steering Committee. The good news is you don't need to make any decisions tonight. This is really just a presentation to provide you with information and, and get feedback or answer any questions, so you won't be needing to make any decisions on a committee tonight. I'm just introducing that concept to you. So as Ms. Reyes mentioned, when, she and I have actually known each other almost for a big chunk of our own careers, much of it while I was in Cedar Park. But when she and I met several months ago and I told her I really just loved this big project work that I had done for the last 10 years at Cedar Park and how that's really kind of what I wanted to focus on, she said, "Well, your timing is great. We're trying to do our own transformational project." So my position is temporary. It's part-time. It is paid for out of the funds the city council has set aside for city hall. But as she mentioned, it really provides that focus on this project. Transformational projects like this, which we're going to get into because it's about a lot more than just a city hall, are really hard to do when you're balancing it with your normal job as an assistant city manager or department director. So I think it was really wise of the city to sort of have someone focused on it. As Ms. Reyes mentioned, my background is in a suburb to the north of Austin. But the last 10 years of my career there, I really spent working on a 50-acre redevelopment. Cedar Park, unlike San Marcos, which has character and personality everywhere you go, Cedar Park is a fast-growing suburb that frankly has some great houses. I mean, I live there. I, you know, go home there every day, great schools, but really is desperate for identity. And they wish they could have some of the character San Marcos has. So the Bell District project was really about creating this sort of sense of place, gathering place, something that felt unique in the community, because really Cedar Park was lacking that. So it's a 50-acre redevelopment. The first phase opens this fall. So I saw it really through the beginning of the idea, all the way through construction of the first phase. It is anchored by a city park and the new city library. It has a creek running through it, which is nothing compared to a river, but it is a small body of water that is along the border of the project. But there's a lot of parallels, right? Because it's a public-private partnership. It was a huge project for the city that really was the council's priority for a decade and took a lot of heavy lifting. It also included the realignment of a state highway. Bell is a U.S. 183, so working with Tech dot to realign a highway was no small feat. Just a couple of quick parallels I want to mention, only because I think they translate well to San Marcos, is as I mentioned, my role really started from creating the vision for the project and helping to sort of guide that community input process. And I'll talk about the community input in just a second. All the way through a real estate strategy, land acquisition, assemblage, finding a development partner, negotiating an agreement that's a 20-year agreement that really serves to align city vision with what the developer needed to achieve and really reflects community vision. On this screen and the photo in the top left, you can see one of our public meetings. When we started this project in 2014, I hoped 50 people would come to a public meeting. You all have been in local government for a while. You know, it can be challenging to sort of get people to come out of their houses to something as exciting as a public meeting. But we had 100 people at the first meeting, and I thought, "This is victory." We kept going, and towards the end, we had between 500 and 600 people at our meetings. They were 95% happy about the project and excited and just wanted to know when it would be opening. That does not happen by accident. That happens with a lot of strategy, a lot of work, and a lot of community engagement that is very intentional and very custom to the public at large, specific stakeholder groups, et cetera. So tonight's presentation isn't entirely about community engagement. I could go on and on about that. But that was something that was really unique to this project and I think helped Cedar Park to get through a project that took a decade. I think this project will not take a decade, but I do know how important community input is to this group, and so I wanted you all to know my experience specifically in kind of that realm as well. Okay, so let's talk about your project. When Ms. Moyer was here in February, which was the last public update on the project, the council confirmed the desire to move city hall to the city-owned land on the north side of Hopkins. They expressed support for a public-private partnership, or a P3 for short, regarding the redevelopment of the current site, so the property city hall's currently on. It sounds like there was a lot of interest in various uses on there. I heard a lot of discussion on affordable housing potentially, as well as other projects that have sort of community benefit. But there was not a prescriptive sort of plan. That was sort of left to be determined. And then I also heard a willingness to hold an election for the parkland release, which is of course critical, not only for the new city hall across the street, but also for the redevelopment of this property. So when I came on board with the city in April, I think one of the first things I realized was although it's sort of casually referred to as the new city hall project, when staff and even when I heard the mayor's state of the city presentation were talking about this, it was actually about much, much more than a city hall. City hall's a huge part of it. It's an activator. It's a huge public investment in this corridor. But what I really heard was a desire for development that was community-oriented in this area. I heard a desire for a gateway so that when visitors and even residents are really entering San Marcos off of I-35, they're seeing the best, rather than something that maybe doesn't reflect the rest of the community that well. I also heard a lot of interest in creating what sounds sort of fluffy, but is real, which is a sense of place, creating something that felt really like a draw to the whole community, as well as integrating kind of special features that made, that makes someplace feel intentional, well-designed, and like a place you remember. So I heard discussion about public art and integrating green space and honoring the river. So sort of all of this combined has really led me to say, "Let's not call this the new city hall project. It's really about the Hopkins Gateway Project," because this is going to encompass so much more that will have a much bigger impact on the community as a whole. And I think we sort of do the vision a disservice if we just talk about city hall. So I wanted to kind of highlight what I see some of those project components being. Now, these are my words. I am sure someone else will come up with something much catchier down the road. So, you know, subject to somebody with better ideas. But sort of the first component, I'm referring to as the civic corridor. So by moving this new city hall to the north side of Hopkins, you have an incredible opportunity to sort of create this connection between, even starting at CM Allen, because you've got the Parks Department there, you have an incredible park there that is really home to some of the city's biggest events. All the way down to across the railroad tracks where you cross the river, you've then got your activities center. There's some public art out there, a new library. And then when you add in a new city hall, you really have this opportunity to create this civic corridor, a place for the community. And so although we're still sort of in the visioning stage and I don't have plans to show you yet, I do think what I'm hearing and what kind of I myself envision as somebody that has spent some time over there now, is it's a place that's walkable, that your community feels welcomed. If it's walkable on a day like today, that means there's a lot of shaded trees. It feels comfortable. It's a place that really the public feels like is their San Marcos and is their community. You have all the ingredients already over there. I think with just some good urban planning and some, some careful thought, you can really make it feel like this special place. So that's the first component. The second component is of course new city hall itself, right? So not only does that give you the opportunity to really create that visual gateway when you're entering into San Marcos off of 35, but it also allows sort of you to tie together this whole area. It's also a large public investment, which I think will do a lot to kind of lift that whole area. And to be candid, based on what we already sort of are predicting the needs are for new city hall space-wise, to meet the city's current needs and future needs, and the desire for this to be a building that really creates a gateway, we should all expect the building to be denser, a little bit taller, have more of a sense of presence than what we currently see at city hall. Frankly, it'll just have to be because of the land, but that also gives you an opportunity to really make an architectural statement that again kind of contributes to the whole revitalization of this area. The third component is Hopkins Street improvements. Before I was even working for the city, I took a morning and went through the community to get more familiar with it, because shamefully, I really was only familiar with the outlet malls. So I spent a good chunk of time in the city sort of exploring really, really what San Marcos is, which is, which is not those outlet malls. But what I really noticed quickly was that CM Allen has had such beautiful improvements made there. You know, first, when you drive through, you just see great landscaping, some pavers. I learned about the Bio Boulevard. But that, when you get to that little section, you know you're someplace special, and you also know you're someplace that's been well-designed. I know the Campo Plan included some recommendations and plans to do something similar along Hopkins. We are taking a new look at that. I've kind of added it to the list on this project, looking at from north CM Allen to really where Hopkins hits 35, to see what improvements can be made there, sort of in the spirit of CM Allen. I don't think we'll be able to replicate it for the entire span of that road. There's some right-of-way challenges. But that feeling on that road in that section, I think is something really special that we can take to this area as well. So that's another project component. And then the final one is really that public-private partnership that'll be on this land. So the city has such an asset, such an asset by already owning this land. And we want to leverage that value to really create a public-private partnership that brings private development to this, this acreage. But because the city owns the land, you're kind of in this unique position of getting to make sure this development reflects community values, community needs. By being that landowner, it really gives you a strong position to sort of really shape what goes here, which again, all four of those components together are what really are going to create this project that really feels like it's kind of transforming San Marcos and this area and hopefully revitalizing the community as a whole. So this image is not like an official map. I mean, I made it on Google Earth, so, but it really is just to sort of show how these components could work together. So you've got this civic corridor all the way on the north side of Hopkins that really ties together all these existing civic amenities. So I mean, that's low-hanging fruit to really do something to connect all those. You've got the opportunity for new development on this property, which again, I think brings a lot of investment, which is going to be important not only for the whole feel of the area, but frankly financially, that is going to be very important to make this project work. A new city hall, which really sets a new tone and gateway and is welcoming to the community, and then these improvements along Hopkins all along. So I think collectively, you've got a pretty exciting project that I think will really benefit the community as a whole. So what's happening now? So I joined the city in April, and quickly I've been getting up to speed on everything that's already been done, as well as sort of planning for what we need to be doing next. So my first kind of comment is that we're sort of assembling this team with expertise. And frankly, you have a lot of expertise internally already, you know, whether it's working with engineering or public works or staff that have been here a long time who really have some great insights. So we're sort of getting their nuggets of wisdom together. And then also, the city will be posting an RFQ for what's called a transactional advisor and some land planning, and that should be going out next week. This is very similar to what Ms. Moyer talked to you all about in February, when she had really closely followed what Flugerville's doing. This person is really going to help give us guidance on the, the public-private partnership deal. So how you kind of slice the finances on that is a wide spectrum. And so it's important to sort of know different models that again, kind of make all of this, the components of the project work financially and work for a private partner. You want to get the highest quality private development partner possible. And so part of that is kind of getting your ducks in a row first. And then I think some land planning is important, not in a prescriptive way, but really in a way that gives the community something to kind of understand this concept and understand what this project is and hopefully rally around and also make sort of the vision real. So that will also be a process that is informed by community input as well. So these, this team of the transactional advisor and land planning does not happen in a vacuum. It happens sort of in conjunction with engagement. We do have underway, or we're getting close to finalizing a professional services agreement that will come to the council in August, for an architect to begin planning, space planning for the new city hall. Now, this is not design. We are not picking out carpet or how big a room is yet. But what we are figuring out is what is the square footage needs for both existing city organizational needs and for the future. And when you're doing that space planning, it's important that you take into account as much flexibility as possible so that the space itself is done in a way that can adapt to future needs, so that you're not having to do constant remodels. So that is underway. That will be really important, because once we know sort of how big the footprint needs to be, we can then get a price estimate for that. And that is obviously a critical data point to this whole project. So like I said, Public Works is taking lead on that, and you will be hearing from them in August about that contract. We're also evaluating potential partnerships. You know, San Marcos is so lucky that you have so many incredible entities in your community, whether it be Texas State, GSMP, et cetera. So I've been meeting with those different entities to see if there's a way that a partnership benefits both parties, and I do want to emphasize that part. So really, the city should not entertain a partnership that doesn't benefit the city. You know, so as we're talking to these groups, it's not about sort of giving groups free space in city hall, far from it. It's really about aligning interests and can our position and our project be strengthened by including someone else. And then of course, we're preparing for meaningful and effective community engagement. I think community engagement is key to projects like this moving forward, because they're long, they can sometimes be a little hairy, they take time, and if you don't have community support, you're really pushing a boulder uphill. That being said, I think you get the most significant and really meaningful engagement from the community when you're well-prepared. So we have a little bit of prep work to do over the next few months to make sure that when we really do go out to the community at large, we're having productive conversations. And more importantly, we can use the input we're getting and we're asking the right questions. So looking ahead at what is to come, I'd say kind of right now, we're in the step of what I'm calling explore and analyze, which really means figuring out what this project's going to be, what is the vision, what's important, cost estimates for the facility and infrastructure. They'll change, but it's important to have at least an initial data point. And then really also what we're going to be doing, especially once that transactional advisor and land planner are on board, is looking at different scenarios. And when I say scenarios, it means sort of what could this project look like? What could the development on this site look like? Is something more residential, less retail? Is something heavy on park space? I mean, I don't know what they're going to be yet, but we need to look at several scenarios. Those are important, both to sort of test against community values and what the community would like. It's also important to sort of test it frankly for the dollars and cents of it. What is something costing? What is making sense? Because you do have to look at the whole. So that's sort of step one. Step two is really that community engagement in, in real focus. So at this point, then we would begin really gathering input. So once you have sort of a sense of what the picture and possibilities can be for a project like this, that's when it makes sense to start getting public engagement at large. And so what we want to do is identify the common themes and ideas we hear from the public and then determine which ones are most feasible. And of course, all along the way, we are regularly getting council input and guidance. I mean, you all are foundational to this project, so please don't think I'm glossing over that. I mean, that's critical all along the way, that we're sort of getting your input and vision as well. The third stage is really refining our concepts. So at this point, we've gotten some possibilities of what can work. We've tested them with the community and gotten input from them. At this point, we're really choosing sort of what we think the scenario and the mix is going to look like and be. And then really, you're ready to start soliciting private development engagement, as well as looking for a private development partner. And then finally, is when I usually think like, "We're done." But actually, you're just beginning. So the final stage is really, you're, you know, executing on the financial tools the city may need in order to make this happen. You've negotiated an agreement with a development partner, and you're really getting things underway. And, and then shovels are in the ground, and that's the exciting part. So although this can sound really long, and in some ways, I don't want to lie, it is a thoughtful, intentional process that if you're doing it right, is not rushed. The city does have several assets on this project that I think actually will make things move a little faster. So we're not moving a highway like I did in Cedar Park, so that's very positive. But also, the city already owns the land that we're working on, and that really will allow things, I think, to move faster than other projects where that may not be the case. So I do want to introduce to you all the concept of a steering committee for this project. I know that the council has used these before for various projects, so you all are familiar with what these could be. But this group obviously does not replace the role of council in any way. They are really there to provide guidance and input. They're definitely advisory, and really, if done well, these are the people that end up being your project champions, because there is a parkland release election that will be needed probably in 2025. And so it's really important to already have the community aware of the project, feel like they've given input, they feel like they are part of the project, they've helped shaped it. And then you've also got hopefully a steering committee that's really helping you champion that election when that comes. What I've put on the screen is really just a, initial thoughts for what could be the makeup of that group. You don't need to make those decisions tonight. We'll bring you back a future council item to talk about appointments probably later in the summer and fall. We'd like that group to begin working in the fall. But you can see, I've sort of put it as a, a good blend of people. I would definitely like some city council participation on there. And in particular, I would, it's always helpful to have representation from the neighborhood behind where all this development's happening. That's really critical as well. So, but I've listed kind of some different makeup of the group, obviously at the council's discretion. You guys know what, what needs to be in a group like this. So as I close, I do want to kind of just highlight some of the things that as a new person to your organization I see, because I think sometimes when you've lived here a long time or you've served for a long time, you don't see stuff that maybe fresh eyes sees. So I would say in the couple of months that I have joined this team, it is so apparent to me, the council and staff momentum on this project. And it's easy to think that that is something that every project has. That is not the case. So that's a huge win already. Then also, you know, I mentioned it at the beginning when I was sort of, you know, poking fun at, you know, my home, Cedar Park, but there's so much authentic community character already in Cedar Park, whether it's your downtown, the river, really just sort of the character and personality that you don't have to be in San Marcos long to see it. That is something that this project can really build upon. I think the location also between downtown and 35 gives it the unique advantage to sort of connect all that together. Your natural assets, I don't have to talk to you all about the river to know. It's something that we can really utilize. Again, I mentioned you owning the land. And then again, the fact that you already have these existing civic assets right in this area, you've already got your population coming here, whether it's to the library or the activities center. I mean, let's build upon that, because that, that's really something we can, we can use to really push this forward. And then finally, I think it goes without saying, it's really a kudos to the council and city staff for really showing the commitment to this project by sitting aside funds at the end of every budget year from the last few years. Although, you know, we will still need more in order to get the project done. It shows such commitment, and I think this is really going to be important when we're trying to attract again, a quality development partner, to show the council's multi-year commitment to really saving for this project. I mean, that's, that's big. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions or get any feedback or go back to anything that may be helpful.
Counsel?
I can start us off. Ms. Caffrey, wow. Impressive, and welcome to San Marcos, by the way.
Thank you.
The, that Bell Street district there in Cedar Park, I think that's really relevant to what we're trying to do at this current site. And very impressed and very hopeful and want to get this moving forward. I think that's probably the most important thing as elected leaders and leaders in our community, is that we need to keep driving and pushing this forward. The, you know, the concept of the civic corridor, I mean, it's already there. Let's just add to it and put the, you know, the anchor, or I guess not the anchor, the, the entrance with city hall. And then the, the idea of improving Hopkins Street, you know, trees provide shade, provide more inviting walking place. more inviting walking place, a, a better scenic drive when you come into town. I think all the components are there. We just really need to drive this forward and keep the momentum up. And I'm glad that we've brought in staff to really drive and, and make this project get started. So thank you.
Yeah.
Welcome to San Marcos.
Thank you.
Matthew's going to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just kind of wondering, I know you put a timeframe as a question here, but are we hoping for seven years to start breaking ground? Are we hoping 10 years to start breaking ground? What is your ideal timeframe there just to break ground?
So I'll give you an answer, but then I want to put like five asterisks. Just because if I learned anything on Bell, that agreement was authorized by council in February of 2020. And so we immediately hit, you know, something nobody saw coming, and all of a sudden, you're pulling out like the damages and remedies section of your contract that you think you'll never need that. And, you know, two weeks later, you're pulling out. So you never know what's going to happen because the project's opening now, so it all turned out well. Okay, but if I was going to predict a timeline for the stars aligning, right? Like, let's say everything's going terrific. I would love to have a successful parkland release election November of '25. That's really critical to whether or not this can even happen. Prior to that, we need to make sure we have a plan that meets community vision, has the right amount of community benefits in it. It does have to pencil financially, or we're not going to get a good partner. So like, that's the prep work, along with getting the community to get engaged and really have a, a hand in shaping what this is, right? So between now and November '25, which sounds so far away, we have our work cut out for us. Assuming we have a positive election, which, you know, I'm confident, at that point, really, you can bring in a development partner, begin negotiating an agreement, get going. I think City Hall can probably at that point, rough, I say at that point, I mean like within a timeframe, begin design. So again, assuming all of the financial tools line up. So that is my long-winded way of answer of saying, I think seven years is my goal. I know staff are like, I thought it was going to be next year, but we're working really hard on it. Because there's a lot of components, right? It also won't all be done at once, okay? So projects like this, very common are in phases. When I told you that the Bell project is opening this fall, Phase 1A is opening this fall. So, you know, they happen sort of sequentially. But I am working as fast as I can, yet not rushing it because I think it should be a thoughtful exercise.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I was hoping for two to three for the first, but we'll, we'll see how long it takes.
You know, we could all win the lottery, and then we could do this tomorrow, guys.
I have a question. I have a question.
Mr. Scott?
It was nice meeting you earlier too, by the way. This, with the steering committee or will the council as a whole negotiate the deal or is that going to be through staff?
That's traditionally done through staff. And so, you know, what I would sort of recommend, although subject of course to what Ms. Reyes wants to do, is staff will do the negotiating and really city council's the one that has to approve that development agreement. It's usually a 15 to 20-year agreement. So when you get to negotiating, to me, the steering committee is not really part of that. That needs to be with people that were elected by the community. So it would be staff and then bringing you all very regular updates. You'll get to see lots of me during that, is how that would probably work.
We tend to have committees we put together to negotiate a lot of times, so.
Okay.
And we can, and we can.
I don't know that our committees negotiate anything. Our committees plan, listen to the community, and, and put together where we want to go. But at some point, we've got to let staff do some, when it begins to do the dollars.
Well, yeah, I understand, but yeah, we have many, all these, the SEMA, Kissimmee, all these were negotiations.
Okay.
This wouldn't be much different.
Well, we'll find out. That's, that's years away.
I think with the Development Agreements Committee and things that, that council does, I think is where it's really where you're going. And, you know, we can, we can talk about that and see what the will of the council is, you know, at, at the time. It's an important project. We want to make sure that we're not leaving anybody behind through this effort. Anybody that wants to be involved in some particular way, we want to do that. I think, you know, one of the things that Ms. Caffrey talked about that really appealed to me is she said, hey, even if we were meeting with one person, it was an important meeting because that one person, you know, was somebody who may had thoughts and opinions or things like that, that we needed to just make sure we were taking into consideration as we were doing our project. So a lot of the great way in terms of how she thinks about it is very much in line to where I know that, that you, this council would think about it the way we would think about it as staff. So there's going to be more to come. The other thing that I will mention is, you know, we recently did the DC trip. And, and so that's something else that we'll be talking about is looking at, you know, what kinds of potential that we have for green features and things that might be something that we could look at for grant funding and stuff. And so, so that's something that we're also talking about with Ms. Caffrey, just to try to leverage, you know, council, y'all have done an amazing job of giving us some great seed money to get started with this effort. But that's why we want to also program other uses so that we can bring other funding sources to the table. And so that's why it's really important to look at, you know, how do we make it the people's house? How do we make sure that there are other funding sources we can look at? How do we program the space to make sure that we might open up to other opportunities to help us fund this? So that is something that we're going to be ears to the ground and trying to make sure that we're working in lockstep with our, our lobbyists and, and our consultants in, in DC.
I would like to follow up with that because I think it's going to be really important to make sure we're building ahead for the future because we're growing so fast in this area. If you don't have those projections of the multiplication of the population growth and you add that into this, you can have a problem. They're already full by the time we get there, so that's one thing I'd.
Yeah, City Hall, the space planning will include projections for 10, 20, 30 years out. Also, when they're even calculating space, we're having some, well, when we really get started. But in the interview process, we talked to them about how important flexibility is of space. And that has a lot to do with adjacencies, meaning what department is near where, who do you think's going to grow, who may shrink. So that's all a friend of mine for us, for sure.
Thanks.
Mr. Prather?
Why not have the election this fall?
Well, I think I'm, my recommendation is I'm reluctant to put things on a ballot that the community isn't really aware of. And I think when you say changing out parkland for development, that can sound really bad. I think if we work on this project and show people, we're actually creating a place you can go to that maybe right now, you're just driving through. That, I think, really softens how people feel about this idea of, you know, giving back parkland for another year. Also, you know, presidential election years are always kind of wild cards.
Lots of people vote, none of them.
They do, a lot of people vote. But I feel like it's, it's more important that we have a informed community about the project and feel like, hey, I got to go to a couple of public meetings. I got to answer a survey. I got to talk to that staff person and tell them what I would like to see. Because all of that will shape the vision, and I, I think it will be more successful if we do that process first.
We don't want to rush it just because, I mean, we're talking about, we'd have to call for the election. Y'all called for that August 5th.
Yeah.
So you're talking about just within a month that we would have to, to do that.
I had the same initial thought, and I thought, yes, if you put, we're going to take away parkland on a ballot and people know absolutely nothing.
It's how it's worded, you know, it's for, technically, that'd be for the City Hall.
I not, I, I think taking away, and perception of taking away parkland would not be a good thing unless people understand, well, first of all, it's not used for park now exactly, but I, I, I think we need to get the publicity out. Although I see that's a step that's a, a fatal step for us, but I think we're going to have to get the word out to make that successful.
I like speed and action, but I understand sometimes government moves slow, and, but sometimes it takes big, slow gears to move a lot of dirt, so.
Well, you will be happy to hear that in the world of government, the Bell project is considered lightning speed. So at least you hired someone that for government moves fast.
Well, and the other, the other aspect, I mean, you're exactly right, Mr. Prather, in terms of the fact that wording matters. And so also being able to align what we're going to do as far as where we want to, what we want to program within the new facility. Because if that then opens up the corner at Grant Harris, you know, for some other park purposes, then that's something too that could help people to feel like, okay, we're not losing parkland. We're actually going to be opening up another area to help us to really have more of that, you know, park area. So that's the other aspect. We want to get all of that aligned so that we do it right, and we can inform everybody about what the longer-term vision and plans are. Sorry, I swallowed something and it's, I'm having trouble getting my, getting my, my voice back, but just wanted to make sure we shared that with you in terms of the way we're thinking to try to make this be successful.
Well, as someone who's on the Activity Center Committee and then part of the Political Action Committee afterwards to convince the citizens to vote for it, one of the things we did was we came up with every possible use of that building that there could be and put that on the, on the brochure that we were handing out because we wanted to appeal to everyone. And interestingly enough, art gallery was, wasn't, was not something that we thought about, and that's something huge in, in the building. But, yeah, it's, it, it takes some, because that was not only passing the bond, but also, I believe, release of parkland for that too. Mr. Gonzalez, did you have anything else? Thank you for taking on this project for us.
I love these.
You're absolutely correct. This is not something that someone can do who has a multitude of other responsibilities. So thank you. I think this is going to move us along considerably, and so thank you for taking this on, and, and I feel really good about this project getting where we need it to be in a timely fashion.
Great. I'm excited to be here, and you'll hear more to come from me.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Reyes, was there anything else we need on this one?
No, ma'am.
All right, then we will move on to item two.
Receive a stat presentation on the city's five-year sidewalk maintenance program for fiscal year 2025 and provide direction to the city manager.
Ms. Reyes?
So good afternoon again. Today's presentation, the second presentation's going to serve as our annual sidewalk maintenance presentation to council. As you'll recall, this is a process change that we've made and have been doing this now. This is the second year that we've come to council with this. So this information was also shared with the Neighborhood Commission on June 26th. The purpose of this presentation is to review the sidewalk maintenance program, provide next steps, answer questions, and receive council direction on this sidewalk project for FY 2025. I'd like to introduce Adam Rossing, Assistant Director of Public Works, whose staff is responsible for improving the connectivity and walkability of San Marcos. I'm now going to turn it over to Mr. Rossing.
Thank you, Stephanie. Afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'll be giving a presentation on the sidewalk maintenance program. The purpose of this presentation is to review the sidewalk maintenance program, provide you a next steps, answer questions you may have, and receive council direction. Here we have a picture of our hard-working crews finishing up a sidewalk project on Hopkins and a sign there thanking them for their hard work, so.
It's a good picture.
Yeah, the guys loved that. They were, they loved the, you know, that they got that for them. It was nice. The sidewalk maintenance program goals are to remove ADA barriers and improve pedestrian safety. Identify and improve sidewalk connectivity in underserved and/or high pedestrian traffic areas. Want to ensure that all the sidewalks will connect to existing sidewalks. That means no sidewalks to nowhere. And importantly, avoid tree conflicts or any tree removal. Projects are selected using public meetings. We have citizen requests from a live web map we have online and our SMTX connect. We also use GIS analytics that include pedestrian-involved accidents, underserved areas, and high pedestrian traffic areas such as bus stops, hospitals, and grocery stores. Here is a link to our public-facing web map. People can go online, see the entire five-year program, all the locations, and they can submit ideas or requests. I just want to point out the differences between CIP projects and maintenance sidewalk projects. CIP and master plan projects typically require, and they require bond funding, require multiple years for design and completion. They require right-of-way acquisitions. The significant design is required, and they typically have utility conflicts. Whereas our sidewalk maintenance program utilizes our annual budget of $230,000, can be completed within weeks and months. There's no right-of-way acquisitions required, no significant design required, and we try to avoid utility conflicts. This is a map on the right of our FY '25 project locations. I zoomed in a little bit, and that's our larger project all along Wonder World to get all the ones that we inherited from TechStock back into ADA compliance. Here are the FY '25 maintenance locations. Some of these, in previous years, we, we received direction to look at all the goat paths that are around town. And some of these include those, the ones on Cottonwood and Stagecoach, these are the areas that we like to connect, actually build sidewalks in those areas. Here are some examples of the FY '25 projects. On Overlook, we want to repair the failing sidewalks in the neighborhood that won't be addressed in the current CIP project. On Cottonwood Drive, we want to eliminate the gap and add ramps for access to shopping. On Wonder World Drive, we want to repair, there's quite a few ADA ramps we want to repair and get back into compliance. And then on Stagecoach Drive, we want to eliminate the gap to the senior living there. The completed steps so far, we sent out the mailers prior to our public meeting, and we held the public meeting in April. And mailers were sent out prior to our Neighborhood Commission meeting we held just last week on 6/26. And we received approval of the FY '25 projects by the Neighborhood Commission and received their feedback to add future projects into the next few years. Next steps with your approval would be to send out the 90-day mailers to landowners and residents that'll be impacted by the future projects. We'll hand-deliver flyers to adjacent addresses two weeks prior to the work beginning. And then with your approval, on October 1, we can start completing projects on behalf of the community. I'm here for any questions you may have, and city staff is seeking council direction to proceed with the FY '25 sidewalk projects.
Counsel, question? Mr. Prather?
Not a question, but a comment. Keep the foot on the pedal, and as, as much as we can provide the resources, the financing to keep doing what you all are doing, let's keep doing it. But it's very impressive, the amount of improvements to our sidewalks throughout our community. Very impressive.
Thank you.
Beyond that, actually, I've had them put sidewalks, and the professionalism that they were, when they put the sidewalks, it was amazing. These guys are top-notch.
Yes.
Top-notch, go.
We're very lucky to have good, qualified applicants and good, hard-working people.
I was amazed. They were awesome.
Awesome, thank you.
And I assume that we're ready to say, proceed, full steam ahead, whatever it is we need to do. So yes, and I, I think there's been a lot of improvements, engagement with the community over the last few years, so thank y'all for doing all of that. And I'm, you know, we've been doing this for a long time. It just seems like someday we'll have them all done, but, but, but we're not there yet. And, and I know that y'all will just keep working. We still have two crews, right?
We have one, yes, two crews under one banner, yes.
Right, okay.
Two full-time crews.
All right.
One that handles mainly these projects and one that gets all the, whenever there's a complaint or an issue that comes up, one jumps on those right then.
All right.
So, yep.
Well, that's, that's wonderful. I think we're good, so.
Probably why we don't hear any complaints, then, yeah, I was like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Full steam ahead.
There you go.
Thank you so much. Lovely presentation.
Sure, thank you.
And thanks for all the extra information that was in the packet. That was very helpful too, to review. Okay, so Ms. Reyes, does this complete the two things that you needed for us to do?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, then we are on to item three. Mr. Vina?
The city council will convene in executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding the following matters. A, a petition submitted to the city clerk proposing to repeal police civil service under Chapter 143 of Texas Local Government Code. B, the matter of State of Texas versus City of San Marcos, Cause Number 24-0267, in the 207th District Court, Hays, Texas, concerning the city's enforcement of certain laws related to marijuana. C, an offer of settlement from Walton, Texas LP relating to a request to be released from the city sewer CCN and related development agreement and MUD consent agreement.
Looking for a motion to go into executive session?
So move.[1763.86]
Please, I'll move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. We'll vote about executive session.
Okay, Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
And Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Motion passes 620 with one absent.
All right, so we're going into executive session at 3:50. We have returned from our executive session, which was concluded at 4:47. It is now time for question and answer session with the press and public, seeing no one in the chairs or in the lobby, and no one was signed up, correct?
Correct.
I would accept a motion to adjourn.